All right, good morning, everyone. Let's call to our county commissioners' board meeting for Wednesday, November 17.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Present.
Commissioner Harris.
Present.
Chair Weymeyer.
Present.
Vice Chair Dickinson.
Present.
Commissioner Dunn.
Present.
And our pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
And invocation.
Good morning, everybody. Couple of leadership thoughts for you, and then I'd like to pray for you. Leaders go first is a very true statement. Leadership is being willing to go first. It means we set the example. It means we see more, and we see it before others. Going first isn't a privilege, it's a responsibility. Going first doesn't make us better, it just makes us responsible. Leaders shoulder the impact of making the first move. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, I pray over these leaders that are standing in front of me, that they would lead well, that they would lead themselves well, that they would lead our community well. Lord, I believe you are the one who establishes all leadership, and you take leadership away. So as these have been established, I pray you bless them and pour favor upon them in every way possible. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our consent agenda today would include minutes from the meeting on November 10th, minutes from the meeting on November 15th, claim vouchers in the amount of $720,504.52, and tax change orders in an amount of negative $1,286.82. Is there a motion to approve a consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer.
Yes. First item of business is to consider the annual law enforcement contract with the city of Pomona. Good morning, Sheriff.
Good morning. As you've indicated, this is an annual contract. Just as a, for the sake of reminding everyone and for the record, the city of Pomona does not have a police department. They contract with the county through the sheriff's office for their law enforcement services. And without that, we could, they would not have anyone that would write tickets to go to their city court. We don't have the authority to enforce municipal code minus a contract. So that's, that is the purpose of the contract. This contract is a, I worked with Sarah Maple, our HR director. The way that it is, the way that we arrive at the amount of the contract is that we take an average of salaries to include benefits for the person, for the average for the people who would typically be working this. So this is definitely corporal and sergeants that typically work it. So we worked out that, that's kind of what we work off of. And between pay, pay increases and what we, where benefits are, this contract will increase by 2% for 2022. These dollar amounts were provided to the city of Pomona earlier in the year while we're going through the budget process, so that this is an amount that they are aware of and that they, that they were able to get budgeted at that time. Other than that, unless any of you have any questions, all I would ask for is that this, that this contract can be approved between the county and the city of Pomona. I do have two copies of it here because we like to keep one copy with the clerk's office and then one copy with the city.
What would be the difference between something that happened in the city of Pomona as opposed to say something that happened in the city of Richmond?
If it violates a state statute, then we can enforce it in Richmond. If it is merely a municipal ordinance, we cannot enforce that, but we can in the city of Pomona. And they do have their own municipal court as well.
And I think that is what distinguishes Pomona, right? The fact that there's just, it's a bigger population and it has its own municipal court. Richmond, Williamsburg, Princeton, just smaller towns, they don't have their own muni courts, so there's not as big a need.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
All right, any questions on this one? Would care to make a motion to, that's right. Approve the 2022 law enforcement contract between Franklin County Sheriff's Office and the city of Pomona for law enforcement services at the cost of $66,822. Make a motion to approve the contract.
Second. Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson. Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks. Second item of business is to consider creating a municipal demolition assistance program for all incorporated communities within Franklin County.
Commissioners, this is an item we've talked about a couple of different times, the latest being on Monday when we just briefly touched on it. There is a, you know, we, we recognize countywide that there's a need for additional housing. One of the ways that we can do that is through programs like the city of Ottawa's condemnation and demolition program where they identify houses that are dilapidated and are in need of significant repairs and maybe beyond repairs. And they go through a, what can be a lengthy process to either get those structures rehabilitated so that they are livable, or they go through a process where ultimately they are condemned and the structures are torn down. That opens up those parcels for redevelopment. They are generally in areas with existing infrastructure, water, sewers, streets, those sorts of things. So there's not a negative impact on the community. In fact, it enhances the community by taking a structure that is past its useful life and brought back with something that's, that's new, increases the tax rules and those sorts of things. So we've talked about in the past, you know, what the, the new values are on those properties, which is, is, you know, they're going from $25,000 to $30,000 on what some of these structures are worth today, to once they're redeveloped, $150,000, $160,000 of worth once they are rebuilt on. So it's a worthwhile endeavor, and so Franklin County can help participate in that by assisting with landfill fees. The average, over the last five years, with the houses that have demoed, been demoed, we average about $1,300 in landfill fees for each one of those structures. And so the idea is to encourage the communities, the city of Ottawa, plus all of the other communities in the county, to participate in this program to enhance our redevelopment activities. So we've come up with a, just a simple application form through the, and we're calling it the Municipal Demolition Assistance Program. The idea is to set a threshold for each community to hit. So like the city of Ottawa, they have averaged roughly three structures a year going through this process. Some years it's a little bit more, some years it's a little bit less, but on average, since the inception, it's about three structures a year. So we put the threshold at four to encourage them to really make this a priority. So the idea is, the way I've got it written, is that once they hit the fourth structure, we would then reimburse them for each one of the demolition, the landfill fees for each one of those structures. And then from the fifth on, we would waive all the landfill fees. And so they can utilize that money that we're going to reimburse them to continue their program on. With the communities that don't currently have a program like this, I've set the threshold at two. And so once they demolish that, that second house, we are, we would be able to reimburse them, and then from the third house on, we would waive any fees. And so it's a fairly simple application fee or application process, just normal information. We would ask them to, you know, list their permit number, contact information for whoever at the, the city that is administering the program. We'd want to know contact information for the contractor, for the homeowner, those sorts of things, anticipated start date, anticipated completion date. And then ultimately, it would be approved by myself, and then the county administrator would have the final say on whether or not the application is, is approved. And each one of the applications would need to be submitted prior to them beginning the demolition process so that we have time to log the information and record the, that in our, we'd create a spreadsheet to be able to track all that. We would also require them to submit landfill receipts so that we can attach that to the file as well, so that we can track that information. So the, the form is, you've got a copy of the form. The only thing, I, I do want to change one word on the, the form that I presented to you. In the first paragraph, where it talks about encouraging communities to remove blighted unsafe structures, I'd like to change that from blighted to dilapidated. I think that's a little more fitting word than blighted, but the rest of it is, is there for your, you know, editing or approval.
Something that I would like feedback from the board on is these thresholds. So, and talking to David, he, he makes it sound like going above four within the city of Ottawa may be a little burdensome on them, given all of the work that goes into that. And if that's the case, then I would question, do we want to go from two down to one in all of the smaller communities and just say, if you raise any houses, we're going to waive the fees? Because if Ottawa can't do five, then we can't expect Richmond or Randool to do two before we waive their fees. So I'd probably propose for the smaller towns, literally one is all you have to do and we'll...
I was thinking about that, too. So the smaller towns historically really haven't done any at all.
Yeah.
The reason we're setting that threshold with Ottawa is basically a third of the cost, roughly, is demolition. So if you're doing three houses, we pay for all the demolition. Now you're really only paying for two, but you're still doing three. We just want to keep committing that same amount of money. It's a great economic development tool. The problem is, though, well, and also another thing with the small communities, Richmond has population five, 600. So if Ottawa's 12,000, that's 5%, 20 to one.
20 to one.
Pomona, 1,200, it's 10%. Wellsville's right about 2,000, it's 2,400, it'd be 20% if you thought, so per person, two houses would be a lot, much higher rate.
Yes.
I think the rub is, if you're on the city commission or a city resident, why do we have to pay for some houses to be, you know, and these other ones get it for free? I think if you explain it, and you know what I mean, per capita, they're doing much higher rate and, you know, ultimately...
It's not like we're paying all the costs. You know, they still have the actual cost of the demolition, and that's still a burden.
But yeah, a town, an area of 5, 600 asking to do two is a lot, lot more burdensome than 12,000 doing four.
Tell me how this typically works. So if I, if my house is raised by the city, do those costs get, are they put on the tax so they supposedly...
Yeah, they, they try to recuper, recoup those costs through adding liens on the property.
But oftentimes, I'm sure that those properties end up getting...
Oftentimes, they go to tax sale.
Yeah.
And so those fees...
We don't ever get them back.
...are dissolved through the tax sale because they're not going to get paid. You know, once the, once the property's torn down, the owners probably are already in arrears in their taxes already, and then once the cost of demolition is added, then...
They just say, forget it.
It's kind of a lost cause.
But it's, I think a lot of folks hear that and think that person's unduly getting the benefit, you know, they let their thing go to pot and now they don't have to pay. They lose their property.
Yep.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
I think that, I think you...
Do you want to go down to one?
Yeah.
It sounded like a good deal to me.
And the threshold for the city of Ottawa, where they've been averaging about three, encouraging them to go to four, and then...
I wish it was more, I think.
Well...
But I get it, that's, I think that's a fair number, so...
That's, that's been their historical average. I, I can tell you, over the last five years, like in 2017, they, they started three, three of these condemnation processes. They were able to complete one. 2018, they started two, and they got those two, plus the two from 2017 completed. In 2019, they were able to complete all three of them that they started. 2020, they actually started seven of those, got two of those completed, but they finished the other five this year. And I think they've got some more in process yet this year as well. So some of the processes are, can be a month or two to, you know, if they've got a landowner that is willing and able to, and desires to make improvements, the commission, and rightfully so, probably, whenever you talk about taking somebody's property, they give them additional time to make those improvements to try to restore that, those properties, so...
By all the other thought, the many things we do, if we do it, we have to pretty, we're expected to always do it. Do we want to do this for a term of five years, 10 years, see if it works, see if we're getting the desired benefits, see if it's...
Sure.
Instead of coming back 10 years, didn't really do, I mean, I don't know why it wouldn't, but didn't really do what we think it would. Or, you know, we're not seeing an increase like we thought we would, but then it's like, we used to pay for it, why aren't you now? You know, so...
I, I would say, since this is a brand-new program, we just look at it one year from now.
Okay.
And, and then if, if, not to say they have to take advantage of it, but if the application process works, like, we may want to make tweaks just because we've never done this before. So rather than do, and if it works, then maybe bump it to a period of five, 10 years. But we, this is, I mean, David wrote this up from scratch, so maybe just give us a year to see how it works.
If it works, the increased value, we'll pay it off, and there's no reason it won't. We're not going to say like it's a big risk or anything, it's really not, but if we aren't getting the desired effect, I don't want to spend the money on it, so...
Right, yeah. The limited, I did as much research as I could. I couldn't really find any programs out there that were fit our scenario exactly. There are programs out there where cities and counties will assist landowners that want to take care of those structures. They have a program for that where they set aside money and...
A few people have heard about this and asked me about that, especially builders. Well, we could buy something and tear it down. That's a whole nother thing. Then you do get the risk of, all right, I have a rental house, an investment, I just run it to death, I have no incentive to keep it clean, I'll just have it tore down when I'm done with it, yeah, so...
And I could only find like two examples of those kind of municipal programs.
Yeah.
So this is, I think it's a fairly simple and straightforward process that we're trying to get started here. I think it's appropriate, it, it's, it's going to be challenging, but yeah, doable, I think. So if you're in favor of this, we'll make the change to one structure, and I'll change the word blighted to dilapidated, and then the rest of the information will be the same that's on this form, except we'll actually have places for them to fill out the information rather than just listed like I've got it here. We'll, we'll make the form a little more, a lot more user-friendly.
Cities fill out this form, I assume? Cities are the applicant?
Yes.
Yeah.
The city...
Not the contract.
That's, that's correct. It'd be the city, city departments that would handle that.
All right, motion to approve, if anybody care to make it, would be to approve creating the Municipal Demolition Assistance Program for all incorporated communities within Franklin County. It would be adjusting the threshold for the all other communities category from two to one demolitions and changing the word dilap, blighted to dilapidated.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Getting January 1st, or...
Sure.
I've got one more question.
Yes, sir.
Colton Connaught, Colton Connaught alluded to it, if an investor buys a property that's dilapidated and, and the investor didn't want to pay for the cost of demolition, he could go to this program and say, hey, city, condemn it and then tear it down.
The city condemns a property, the cost is assessed to their taxes, so they're not going to get it for free.
Not going to get any.
And probably not at the most cost-effective.
Okay.
That's true.
This, this program, I think, takes out the incentive for those types, types of activities.
Okay.
Because they're going to end up paying for it either directly or, well, directly both ways if they have to, if it ends up on their taxes, so...
Okay.
I will make the motion with the changes as given.
Right, is there a second?
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer.
Yes. Our third item of business is to consider for approval the 2022 Agreement for Economic Development Services for continued through the Franklin County Development Council and funding for FCDC for the 2022 year. That amounts $64,375.
Yeah, this is another thing we do every year. FCDC is one of our community partners, and just like every other community partner, we held their funding flat for the 2022 year. That's already been budgeted and approved as part of the 2022 budget, but with FCDC, we also execute this agreement in conjunction with the city of Ottawa. Done this every year for years. I will tell you, I'm, I would say ecstatic is an appropriate word with the job that Paul Bean has been doing. I'll talk about this a little bit more during my staff report, but we had a great meeting with the city of Wellsville earlier this week, and that's just one of many examples of Paul getting involved with the smaller communities within Franklin County and taking a more unified approach. But Paul is here, if you have any questions for him, I can take any questions you have about this agreement.
I said on that board, as does Derek, and I'd say that his sentiments about Paul's success are shared by pretty much anybody who has to deal with him, or gets to deal with him. That's not the right word.
[laughing].
Well, anything to say, Paul?
Just want to say, because it is the season of Thanksgiving, that the county's been incredibly supportive of FCDC, and this is another moment where you show that support. And so just want to say thank you. I don't take this lightly. I think it's something we have to continue to earn on a daily basis, and just want you to know how much we appreciate it and how much we're members and really appreciate your investment in our economic development. That's all I've got to say.
Affirmative motion would be to approve the agreement between the city of Ottawa, Franklin County, and FCDC for the continued funding for Economic Development Services for the 2022 year in the amount of $64,375.
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer.
Yes. Fourth item of business is rezoning application we tabled from last week. Good morning.
Good morning. Yes, as Chairman mentioned, this is the item that was originally on the agenda last week, and we asked for it to be removed. We have received the updated legal description and updated survey, so I think we have everything that we need to be able to approve this request if that is the decision of the Board of County Commissioners. This request is to rezone. Currently, it's a single 40-acre parcel. The individual wants to sell off about 5.68 acres to, I think, Anis, and that they'll retain the remaining 34.67 acres, and so the smaller tract will be rezoned to the RE district is what's proposed, and then the larger remaining tract would be rezoned to the A2 district. I don't believe that there were any comments at the planning commission meeting when this item was discussed, and the planning commission did make a recommendation of approval of the request. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right. Just north of the lane.
That 5.68 already has a house on it?
Yes, there, I think, is already a house there. I can't remember if this is one of the ones where they're actually tearing down the house or if they're just going to remodel the house, but, so...
If anybody care to make a motion to approve rezoning application 2109-1914, and amend our zoning map accordingly. I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer.
Yes. Thanks, Kenny. On to staff reports, Derek.
Yeah, I mentioned previously, Paul and I had a meeting up in Wellsville on Monday. We met with the mayor as well as city staff and the school superintendent up there. This is part of an effort to continue to build the relationship between the county and Wellsville. We're going to start doing this on a monthly basis. And, and I will tell you, what I come away with from that meeting is Wellsville's open for business. Wellsville is anxious to partner with Franklin County and not just, you know, just talking and sitting on their perch saying, we want to partner, like, they really want to partner, like, they're interested in ways we can help them grow their community, grow their community in a smart way. And I feel like we've already had some substantive discussions in that regard, so I appreciate Paul setting that up. As you're all aware, we also have an ambulance station up there in Wellsville. We had a nice discussion about that and about ways that we can partner with the city to make that an even more comfortable arrangement for the employees that we have up there. And so I'm thrilled with how that meeting went. Shortly after this meeting, Janet and I are going to sit down with Roger Maxwell with Kansas State Bank to talk about refinancing some of the debt that we have with them. We've also, or Janet's also been contacted by David Artaberry, who, as you all know, is our financial advisor. We have been trying to stay abreast of any opportunities to refinance debt, and he's finally reached out to us and he may have one. And so that's something we, I mean, throughout the year, we keep our eye on that, so we'll have a conference call with him, but it does sound like we are going to be back in front of the five of you with the opportunity to refinance some debt, which is, is obviously great news. Last week, a couple of well-deserved promotions happened. I know several of you were at the sheriff's office for Kyle Laswell's promotion, thought Sheriff Richards did a fantastic job setting that up. That was a really nice ceremony, and certainly, certainly a well-deserved promotion. If any of you have ever dealt with Kyle, Kyle's someone who does it the right way, just cares a lot about the community, has a fantastic attitude, and so happy with that. And then over in the county attorney's office, Kim Robinson was promoted to deputy county attorney. And given the nature of what they do, I don't have a lot of interaction with the CA's office, and I know the Board of County Commissioners doesn't either, but I will tell you, Kim's name does cross my desk periodically, and I've never heard a bad thing about her, like another fantastic employee who deserved her promotion, so... Then the last thing, in terms of COVID, we had a pediatric clinic last night, right here in the commission chambers. My understanding is that was pretty successful. Certainly, when I came down here, we pretty well had a full room. And then on Saturday... Certainly, when I came down here, we pretty well had a full room, and then on Saturday, we are having a booster clinic that'll be the biggest clinic that we've done. So you go back to March of 2020, all of our COVID response, done a lot of clinics. Saturday, we're scheduled to do 700 doses, which is, is easily the biggest we've done, but there is absolutely no doubt in my mind, we'll do it and we'll do it well. Tom Winter, Casey Brady, Brenda Fitz and Meyer, Aaron Laurie have all done a fantastic job of, I mean, we had the procedures in place, but just taking them, evolving them a little bit to handle this volume of folks, but that will be Saturday, that will once again be at the middle school. You're obviously welcome to come check it out if you would like to, but yeah, I, I expect that to be ran well, and I'm sure it will, so that's really all I have today, Colt, thank you.
Casey? Hello? Paul?
Just a reminder, tomorrow, so the community knows, the Kansas Works mobile van will be outside here at the County Annex from 10 to 4, and that's a way for people to come and find what jobs are available in the county and, and actually the state, and so I encourage people to come that are looking for work to come and see the van and go in and, and see what's out there for them. Also encourage our businesses and industries to connect with Kansas Works, because it's another way to promote the job openings that, that they have as we continue to deal with our, our workforce issues. So 10, 10 to 4 tomorrow in the County Annex parking lot, right up by Main Street. Proximity Park, we still continue to have activity. You all remember, we had a, a pretty robust site visit a couple of months ago. Commerce and I continue to visit, and they're pretty, keeping their cards pretty close, but it sounds like we're not out in the running yet. Doesn't mean we're gonna get another visit, but we're certainly not done. So hopefully, we'll find out something here in the next two weeks as far as if they're gonna come back for another visit or not. I also have an individual that has a company that has a relationship with one of our industrial industries, and they're very interested in locating an operation here in Franklin County, either in Ottawa or Wellsville, so we continue to get a lot of looks and a lot of activity. We probably have technically five active leads right now. I would say three of them are really truly active, the other two, they haven't said no, but I think it's probably getting cold at this point. But we continue to work that pretty hard. I've got another one that I'm submitting an RFP on to KCADC, which is our, our partner up in the city, and we'll submit that RFP on Friday and see where that goes, so we'll be back up to six active leads at that point. So we continue to work it and continue to get leads. I think that makes 39 contacts we've had this year about new industry coming on Ottawa, so we did have another one this week that reached, I got information on, but again, it was one of these that needed a building, and we didn't, we didn't have a building in, in our region, so whenever that happens, I try to reach out, and they get these, a lot of them get this information, but I try to reach out to our surrounding counties and share with them what I can share in case there's an opportunity there. So just want you to know, we're, we're still seeing activity, hasn't dropped off. I'll be anxious to see what happens in December. Last year, it kind of spiked right at Christmas time, which is interesting, but just see what happens, but still, still working activity, so that's a good thing. I'm open for any questions if you have any.
Thanks, Paul. Kenneth?
Just want to give you a quick update. Of course, we're in the process of getting our new floodplain maps, but sort of as a side project with that, we were notified by FEMA that they were doing a community assessment visit, which they actually did do the, the site visit, I think, this last week, and I did finally get the properties that they were going out and inspecting, so I will probably be reaching out to a few property owners. One of them came back, there, there was nothing that they found. Most of the other ones, I don't feel like any of them were major issues, but storage of equipment, material on the floodplain, so I'll be reaching out to a few property owners just to try to work with them on, on getting those things addressed, and so it's possible you guys might get a phone call. So I'll give you a heads up, but hopefully, we'll get those all taken care of and finish that whole process, so.
So these are properties that weren't previously in the floodplain but are now?
No, these are, so every once in a while, FEMA does these Cav visits for communities, and it's basically sort of auditing the floodplain, so if there are structures or projects that have happened in the floodplain that haven't been permitted appropriately, and also looking through our records to make sure that we're tracking all of the projects correctly that, that we do have going in the floodplain, so sort of a full audit of, of everything in relation to that, that the community does, and then if they do some site visits where they've seen on aerial photography, I believe, where there might be an issue, and then we just have to check back in and, and sort of provide that documentation if they did find some kind of issue, so.
All right, thanks. It's interesting. Brandon?
Yeah, just a couple of quick things here. On the Annex, the skim coating project is done. I'm really pleased with the way that turned out. I think it looks pretty good. If any of you have ever tried to do your own drywall work, you know, it's not really that easy to make it look nice, so these guys did a great job. The outlets are actually being replaced right now. We've got an electrician here working on that, changing those to white. That'll make it look a lot nicer, I think. And then our bed opening for the flooring is actually tomorrow, so we'll be getting that in front of you, your print soon. I talked with the Historical Society and with the Ottawa Main Street Association about the statues on the courthouse lawn. I came before you guys a few weeks ago about those. They had already had Doug Lloyd and Bob Marsh look at those, and they assessed them and deemed them beyond repair, so everybody is fine with those coming down. What we do with them from there, you know, I don't know, but at least for now, we're gonna get those, work on getting those taken down and out of the way, so those are risky.
Well, and I, I guess we just wanted to make sure the five of you are okay with that. Where we left this was we'll check in with some of our community partners, and it sounds like nobody objects, so are you five okay with us getting those off the line?
Not putting any money in.
I'm fine with it.
Okay. Sorry.
Paul, does it mean to assume that that's?
No, you're fine.
Just one last really quick thing, just due to its prominence on, right there on Main Street, our flagpole for the Veteran Memorial, we had an issue with it two days ago, and so the flag is down now. The city has a bucket truck that reaches higher than the county's bucket truck, so they're gonna help us get that fixed up. We were shooting for this morning, it didn't really work out that way, but we're gonna get that back up as soon as possible.
Way too windy this morning to be up there, isn't it?
Yeah, for sure. So that's all I have. If you guys have any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
They haven't, they haven't been the, along the bottom of the walls yet, so if the walls are done, when is that gonna?
So that, the floor, yeah, that's gonna go with the floor.
Oh, the flooring, of course, sure. And the other thing we were trying to talk about this morning, the parking in front of the courthouse is full all the time, so is there anything we can do about that? I mean, I'm thinking probably a lot of that is from the...
I have the contact information for who is handling that and have been working with Ottawa University and, and the Ottawa Police Department, and so we are
Addressing it.
Working through, working through that. It, it's a process, because obviously Ottawa University isn't downtown all the time, and as I mentioned before the meeting, the police department doesn't have all the capabilities and to handle it, you know, right when it happens, so we're working through it. Everyone in the courthouse is, is aware of it and keeps an eye on the situation, and they'll let me know when we have a situation that I'm not aware of.
We got people downtown using it. Hey, that's, how many meetings have we been to over the years to try and get that, that answered, but it could be done better.
So the reserved spots are, that are reserved for courthouse guests are full?
So just, just so everyone is clear, like there isn't, there is some housing for Ottawa University downtown above Corner Market. The owner of Corner Market has secured a parking location for all those tenants, and that is over beside El Miz Cow, and those students would prefer to park closer, and so they are parking on, mainly on Hickory Street. There's been a couple of instances where there's only been two or three parking places for all of the courthouse guests who park at the back, which, as you know, anyone who has any kind of handicap accessibility needs have to park at the back just because of the entrances to the courthouse, and we do have four handicap parking places back there, but as you guys know, there's a lot of people who don't have a handicap placard to park in one of those spaces but still have some accessibility needs, so we have to have plenty of parking back there, and most people don't consider parking in the front when they're at the courthouse just because of traffic and things like that out on Main Street. So we, we have been continually communicating about this with all of the entities that are involved and trying to make sure that everyone's needs are met. Obviously, our downtown businesses have a say in this because they're concerned about people being able to access their businesses. The owner of Corner Market wants people to be able to pop in quickly and get coffee and get out, so if those students are parked like right around the close vicinity of them, that's a problem. We have four assigned parking places over on Fourth Street that are for the courthouse employees, and so sometimes they're parked in those spaces, so this is an ongoing challenge, working through it. Yesterday, we had really quick response by the security at Ottawa University to get the situation taken care of so we could have more parking available, since there was a funeral yesterday that took up over half of the parking spaces over in that area, so.
One, and, and I don't know that, that it necessarily involves Brandon, but just one more thing on the Annex. We have also, I, I don't know, Casey, if we actually ordered them or we're about to, but new signage that is more on-brand. If you'll recall, all of our old signage is just a dingy maroon, and it's beat up, and part of the reason for redoing the walls is so we can change signage as need be with Advent Health and as much as they change suites, so we're just trying to put a level of polish on our buildings that maybe we haven't had, so new signage, we're looking at chairs in the hallways that match, that haven't been pulled from, I'm not even sure where some of the chairs out there have come from, and then something else to maybe start thinking about. We currently have bulletin boards that are full, you know, they're just tacks where you stick pieces of paper. Something to consider is a couple of televisions where it's cheap, where we could just run a PowerPoint, and people could do their advertising that way, just an ongoing PowerPoint, that may be a cleaner look. It's a fairly low-cost investment on our part. It's something that is very easy and simple to change. It seems like it would be more arduous than, you know, just bringing paper in and tacking it up, but it's probably not much. I mean, we just need to have clear communication about who members of the public need to contact to get on there, but that's something that we might also think about doing. You have any initial thoughts on that?
What do we have, two of those, thumpback boards?
Yeah, there's one by Public Works, and I feel like...
I think they're both currently hanging up over here, but I think historically, there was one on, in both main hallways.
And probably anybody can, I mean, nobody even...
We just want to nix the pegboard? Is there any need for it for our actual tenants? Do we need it?
We don't need it for our tenants, and that's a decision you can make as well. Yeah, we...
Yeah, it's halfway down the hallway. I don't, I mean, everything on there is old and kinda...
Yeah, if you wanna, wanna just take them down and no longer do that, that's certainly an option as well.
Just clean it up.
I've had conversations too about using that, that TV monitor idea with a PowerPoint to have, like, the directory in there, that way we can get rid of those two kind of dated shadow boxes that we do right now. Oh, yeah, you already have that? Okay.
Take them down and I guess see what the feedback is on it, and see if we can do that stuff.
Another thought with those boards is Dustin and I have had several discussions about our events on our website, so if we can just get people to turn those into A and R, then we can put, in reason, we would probably have to have some type of policy about what people want that, but we could just...
If we took those boards down, where people put stuff on our, you know, the windows coming in, do we?
I don't.
I think they use Facebook now.
I mean, just, we have rules against that, yeah.
Yeah, no, we are not gonna let people just stick stuff wherever they want.
They usually don't, they have to ask.
So maybe for now, we'll just take the bulletin boards down, and, and we won't move forward with televisions yet, but you might give that some thought, and we'll refine our ideas on what those could be used for and who would be responsible for, I mean, Dustin's over there with a smile on his face. I take that to mean he wants to be the person in charge of all this. But, okay, all right. Thanks, Brandon.
Colt had an idea a couple of months ago about pictures, yeah, on the wall. Have we moved, is that something that we're still considering? Because I think that was a great idea. Awesome, thank you.
Sure.
As you already mentioned, several of you did attend the promotion ceremony for under Sheriff Laswell, and we're very thankful, appreciate that you guys went to that. You guys may not have regular interaction with the county attorney's office, but I do, and our office does, and one of the frustrating areas for us is a area called care and treatment, and that is one of Kim Robinson's specialties, and so we are very appreciative of what she does there. I can tell you that all the time that I've been doing those type of cases, been involved in those type of cases for, for many years, Kim is probably one of the best that I've ever seen work those, and so she does, she does a great job, and I think she's gonna serve the county very well in that capacity. With Kyle's promotion, it did also create some other movement, and so here this week and the next, hope maybe today, but today or tomorrow, we'll be announcing a couple other promotions that we have, that we've made, and which will create other processes that we're gonna have to, have to do, so our goal is to have all of those things done, everybody in place where they're gonna be by the end of the year, and we're on track to do that, but look for some of those. We will be having a, having a, another promotion ceremony, I believe, on December 1st, because we'll have somebody being promoted to that lieutenant position to replace the lieutenant position vacated by Laswell, so. So it's been a while back now that the US Attorney General made some comments and issued some directives about the FBI and the US Attorney General enforcement activity with school board meetings. When that happened, I don't know if you guys received a lot of feedback from the community, but I did, and I reached out at that time to some of my contacts with the FBI to find out where we were. They said they hadn't received anything and did not anticipate anything, but during that directive, there was a, the Attorney General said that he wanted, was telling all of the US Attorneys and, and the special agents in charge of the FBI to meet with all the local law enforcement. My meeting with them did happen last week, so I wanted to update you guys in case you get, have anybody that contacts you about it. They've assured us that nothing has changed as far as... us that nothing has changed as far as legalities or policies or anything like that. That they do not now have jurisdiction that they did not have before. They believe that there was some confusion created by the statements by the Attorney General. But they assured us that they are still here to assist if we request it. Their role is merely a support role upon request from local authorities. So I just want to pass that on. I know that that will. Some relief for some people in our community to be responding. Send an email to people that have corresponded with me regularly about about their concerns about that. So I wanted to update the board first before I before I did that.
Appreciate your time. Dustin, do you have an update?
I feel like we've been talking about the enterprise software about as long as we have COVID, but I'll provide you what update I can on that. As you're aware, comments from Derek last week, we're in a phase right now where we're going through several demos. About two weeks ago, we got through financial management. They tried to sign up. Last week, one restrictions on asset management. We have another one of those scheduled for tomorrow. Yesterday, we spent a lot of time, or not enough time, with taxation, partial property, oil and gas. Very much a lot of information to digest. Janet, Jody, Jamie, their teams that were all involved in the call, like we had 13 people on that call yesterday, probably took the content in much better than I did. But it was a very valuable session to me. And I think there'll be more conversations that came out of that. So much information crammed into a three hour block that I think there is going to be some follow up. No major concerns with that. We still need to go ahead and schedule something for a planning zoning function and looking at doing some pieces there. I would tell you that I feel like maybe initially, we we thought we had a pretty good idea of how the timelines were going to flow for this, but I'm not trying to rush this decision. This is going to be the largest software project that we've done at the county since I've been here, possibly even longer than that. You guys invested heavily in our infrastructure side last year, and this is really the other side of our house. It's the one that's going to impact Gina's job and David's job and how everybody at the county actually works the greater extent than anything that we have done here. So I am still hopeful that towards the end of the year, we can have this all finalized and know where we're actually going to go with it. But I'm also not going to push that until we have every question that we have answered and feel good about the solution that we bring before you.
And and my understanding and talking with everyone involved on the software team is that we are generally pretty excited about what this company is offering. And provided that we can get some kind of questions answered, some loose ends tied up, there's a real good chance we're going to be in front of the commissioners making a recommendation. Would you agree with that?
Yeah, I would say to all the proposals we have, we have a vendor that we think is going to come out in front of this. We and I would say Derek's classification of a loose end is really what we're working through right now. It's just making sure that there's no major gotchas that we're that we're missing or forgetting about and really evaluating what our processes and needs are as we get into some of the questions that vendors are asking us as well. So I feel the process has gone well. I feel very good about where it's going. Excited about getting getting into it deeper, but it is it is a very large project for us. It's not a road grader, but it is a big thing for the county.
And as I've told all of you, we'll have a before we make a recommendation, we'll have a study session where I bring in several individuals that and we'll ask them to try and articulate what this new software is going to do, how it's going to improve their operations, so that the five of you have a great understanding of exactly what this is going to do. The other thing I would say, and we've said this several times, this is a big project, but we intend to pay straight cash for it. Like, we will not incur a dime of debt. And in fact, with with money that with frankly, it's leftover CARES Act money, we believe that we will be able to do this. So this, I mean, you know, it's not going to hit our reserves. I mean, I don't even think, you know, so we try to transfer about a million dollars a year into reserves. I'm not even sure we're going to have to use that money. I mean, I think so. I think we're going to be in a good spot. Like, it's just a great time for us to be doing this project.
Which big picture. Absolutely fits with our goal to start not incurring debts. I mean, all municipalities incur debt, but we move away from that as our our goal right now. Interest rates are very attractive, but they're not always going to be financially. It's not not the direction we want to take the or keep the county in is in debt.
Absolutely.
What do you feel about doing these meetings online instead of I know when I do a meeting online, I don't feel like you get all the information that that if you had an in person. And I was kind of surprised that this was an online meeting and not an in person.
I think that's a little bit about just where we are today. I think a lot of places got pushed into this a year and a half or two years ago. Six or seven years ago, whenever we was evaluating these, we did bring the vendors onsite. I believe we were scheduling about three to four days per vendor to go through this. I feel like what we've gone through with the meetings we've had with the vendors so far, I'm taking as much or more in this format than I did in person. They're showing everything on the screen that they would put on the projector in the room. We are able to see their face, hear their voice, communicate much like we are here. So whether it's the nature of what my business is and my comfort level with it, I can't answer for everybody else that's on those. But I feel like it's gone just as well or or better.
I think I think from our standpoint as the as the end users of of the system, I was able to have everyone in my office on on the call yesterday and and the previous meetings. And that way, you know, we we still can get up from our desk and help customers as they come in. We don't have to completely shut down the office. But but I feel like my whole team gets to see this is what we could potentially be looking at. I think Jody kind of feels the same way, has been able to call people in. When we did this process last time and looked at some of these things, it was very segmented because they they couldn't just transition into newer new things. We had to wait and get new people there. And it was very choppy process process getting the right people in the room to hear the conversation, whereas we could just jump on and off the call as we needed to and take care of things for our customers. So I think it helps from a customer service standpoint, which we in the courthouse really strive really hard to provide good customer service. But also, I want I wanted everyone involved to see what their portion of the software would be. And I think Jody and Jamie kind of felt the same way also.
Another example that was good was in our meeting yesterday, Jody wasn't able to be in the office. So she was able to join remotely. She didn't feel comfortable talking over over the phone. So she was able to type her questions out in the chat and was still able to get the responses to the questions that she had. So I think it just provided a lot of flexibility for everybody and went well, in my opinion. Any other questions about this long going project?
Thanks for the update.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks, Dustin.
David.
So it always comes down to roads. So our crews have been busy. They've completed a ditching and entrance project on Utah Road south of Thomas. They fixed an entrance on Utah north of Hamilton, worked on ditches at Stafford Terrace and Eisenhower, Eisenhower, and again, at 2200 Osborne Road. We also replaced a field entrance and ditched the east side of the road on Nebraska Drive near the Lloyd Jones Bridge. And currently, we're working on a we've got probably today and tomorrow on a ditching and road project on Vermont, south of Reno. This this particular project is an area that we gets washed out every time we get a heavy rain. And so we've been able to create some ditches. We've added some larger entrance tubes and really and also built up the road. So that should make that area a much better situation. So we've done all those things. We also on Monday had four of our road and bridge staff work in the recycling center. That was a huge help. Mondays are always overflowing because of folks coming over the weekend. And we happen to be extra shorthanded. We had somebody on vacation. So those four coming really made a huge difference to the recycling center on Monday. We're able to get two bales of plastic put together and four bales of cardboard. And if if you know anything about baling plastic, it takes a lot of plastic, a lot of those bins to create a bail of through our baling machine. So kudos to the staff that that worked out of their normal positions to help us get that squared away on Monday. Project wise, I've got a couple of progress meetings coming up. I'll be meeting with SCS on the landfill project tomorrow morning, just a status update. And then oh, the week of the sixth, I've got a meeting with Bartland West to get updates on the Old Fifty project and and the site plan. So I'll have more to date information on those projects coming up. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
The Senate or since the Congress passed the infrastructure, I was going, maybe would that be awesome that we could, you know, and the fact that we're getting ahead of the game.
Yeah.
That'd be awesome.
That that is that is potentially a good thing for us. We're still, there's lots of information to come as to how we're going to be able to access those dollars, whether that will be through KDOT, through existing programs, an expansion of existing programs, or if that will be money that will be available directly to us through the Federal Highway Administration. I I'm hearing that it might be a mix of both. And so we're a ways from having solid information, actionable information, but we're certainly keeping an eye on that.
And and on that note, and I've said this a lot too, that's also why we're not pushing forward hard with the ARPA funds. So the ARPA was President Biden's first stimulus. We don't want to push hard on that and allocate those dollars to certain projects, only to find out that this infrastructure money is going to be allocated directly to us and wish, gosh, I wish we would have spent that ARPA money on something else. So we're trying to wait and get clear guidance on how the infrastructure money is going to be allocated. Once we know that, once we have firm parameters on what that can be spent on, then I think we'll have the knowledge to move forward with both stimulus packages and and make sure we spend that money as responsibly as we can.
Like broadband, I would have been ready to jump on board with that first amount and do broadband, you know, help increase broadband, but broadband's included in the infrastructure package. So, yeah.
It's also important to note that KDOT is they have a team of of KDOT staff that their whole job right now is to pour through that legislation to find out how it's going to impact them and also how it's going to impact the local agencies. And so what they have said is that they will have they will have sessions coming up where they will provide that information and provide that guidance to us. So we will have additional resources besides us trying to make sense of it, which will be a huge help for us.
Just one quick update regarding the budget. It is getting near the end of the year, and this is the time that we do our final review of the budget to make sure that everything is how we expect it. So I'm going to be getting all of our reserve transfers ready. And that's something we always bring to you in December for you guys to review all the transfers. So I'll be putting that together and then Derek and I'll review it and bring it to you guys. I'm also working with several departments, just making sure that they're within budget. You know, we always look at the ambulance department. We already know solid waste is going to need an amendment to the budget to make sure that they're within compliance for their what fees are they that you guys are having problems with?
It's the it's the transfer fees.
The trans, yeah, for for HAMs, our HAMs contract. So we are going to need to be doing an amendment for that. So getting that together. Also, you know, we've been watching the annex building. So with the completion of these projects, I'll be looking at the annex fund pretty seriously to make sure that we're going to be within our budget and if we need to do anything else to pay for some of these things that needed to happen. So we'll be bringing that to you guys next month.
Commissioners.
I went to Kyle's deal, Lasswell's swearing in the other day, and it was really nice. Did a good job. I was fortunate, I guess. I've been around long enough to see Kyle go through a lot of different steps on his way up to this position. So with Wellsville and the city council PD, even go back as far as he was security. Most people don't know with the World of Fund, he actually started as security as World of Fund and worked his way all the way up now to his position there. And and kind of the hardest part of probably the tariff position is trying to find somebody to replace somebody that has to fill in for what he did. You know, that's that's the biggest problem is is he's going to do a good job filling in and where he's headed, but you got to find that next person. And then the next person, you know, just have to be both of those. So that's about all I have. Wellsville meeting, it was pretty short. They were very pleased up there to see Kyle moving in one of their own from their community, moving into that position. And they all up there know how good he's done for their community as service to them, other than law enforcement. So he'll be in city council and and other positions up there. So he's just that kind of a guy. So that's all I have.
I did attend Kyle Lasswell's promotion. That was a good ceremony. The only other thing I have is the City of Ottawa, their land bank meeting on Monday did approve moving ahead with one of the investors who is going to purchase all the remaining lots, somebody who it sounds like is going to develop them all at a fairly quick pace. And that would be an awesome thing to get those all built up and back home and sexual.
I went to a couple of meetings yesterday. First meeting was Area Agency on Aging. It was a pretty interesting meeting we had. They finally got occupancy okay for the new garage out there at the industrial park. And and that's quite a process to get everything taken care of for that project. Somehow, they got the approval for some CARES money to do the asphalt lot. It was saving a whole lot of money to pave the parking lot there. It has some connection with COVID, I guess, somehow. And it was approved by their consultant. So anyway, the whole garage costs about $215,000. Time you subtract what it costs to do the pavement and an ICE grant, a donation, it turned out to be about $90,000 for the garage. So now they can park all their delivery vans in a garage now, which is a real improvement. Also, the board approved a consumer price index across the board, 3% increase for all the employees. I know the consumer price index is probably a lot higher than that with inflation now. But anyway, we kind of bumped all employees 3%. Also, I talked to some of the other commissioners, the Coffee County Commissioners on Monday, they voted to not follow the mandate for vaccinations in their county. They made a resolution not to follow the COVID-19 mandates to be vaccinated. So I thought that was interesting to to learn that. And they, one other thing, they bumped the van drivers up to $12 an hour, just trying to be competitive a little bit with the van drivers. So that was kind of the highlights of the Area Agency on Aging. I did get an email from ECAN because my ECAN meeting was last night and they were, part of the agenda was to vote on mandatory vaccinations for that organization. So I asked Dr. Rocker, she's the head of the Area Agency on Aging, about what their position or what what's coming. agency on aging, about what their position or what, what's coming down to their organizations. And she didn't know for sure. The area agency has 55 employees, so she thought, well, we're underneath the hundred dollar, or a hundred person threshold to have a mandatory vaccination. And she emailed me later that they, through her organization, they were an exempt from that mandate. So anyway, last night, I went to the ECAN board meeting, and we did have a lively discussion about mandatory vaccinations for all employees. Basically, the most I got out of it is that we kind of were back, had our backs against the wall because all the, the funding, most all the big funding for ECAN is federally monthly. And the organization said we had to be, to get that funding, you're going to have to have all the mandate for all employees to be vaccinated by January 4th. So we had a pretty lively discussion about the mandate of vaccinations for all employees. And they said, well, you, you know, you kind of follow who butters your toast. So we went ahead and approved the mandatory vaccination for all the employees starting January 4th for ECAN. Cody Haddock from Coffee County was elected the new president of the board trustees. And so we went through the reorganization of the officers. Did get an update from Head Start. They're, they're serving 405 kids in their network of services on Head Start. And I don't have much else. I just, just wanted to show kind of the dilemma about whether to have mandatory vaccinations or not. Cody Haddock, he works for Evergy, he works at the nuclear power plant down there. And at first, they were under the guidelines of mandatory vaccination, but then just this week, they found out they were exempt from mandatory vaccination. So it's kind of, it's kind of a mixed bag, whether you're exempt from having to follow that mandate or not. So I'll just leave it at that.
Anything we need to add before we look to adjourn?
I don't believe so.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
I move.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
We're adjourned.